I'm going to call the meeting to order.
So just before we begin, if I can get board members, your microphones are all turned off. So if you want to turn it on, you certainly can do so. And also, board members at your discretion, because you're seated six feet or more apart, you can take off your mask if it makes communication a little bit easier. And then again, people who are going up to the microphone, you also, at that point, can take off your mask just to make communication easier going forward. Please bear with me again, we'll do our opening and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Carr. So in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to the health, welfare and safety of the citizens in Maine in response to the COVID-19 public emergency as enacted to read section G1 MRSA subsection 403A, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of state of emergency due to COVID-19. This business meeting is being held with a mix of in-person and virtually. We're using Zoom again. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted to maranakook.org YouTube channel. Please be aware that we are doing our best with audio and we think it has significantly improved, but it is a work in progress. So due to the change in the format of the Board of Directors meeting, please be aware that during the course of this meeting, the microphones of the viewing audience will be muted except during the identified portion of public comment. At this particular meeting and this agenda, that would be item number five. There is a chat box in Zoom, but we will not be utilizing this feature for this meeting. And we respectfully ask that if you do have questions, that you contact the central office or email the superintendent or any board member and they will provide you an answer as soon as possible. Again, we ask for the public's patience during these continued highly unusual circumstances. We are going to start with a roll call. Attendance and all votes will be done through the roll call. When your name is called, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes, approve, no, disapprove, or abstain. So I'm going to start with the roll call vote and please make sure that all board members can hear each other and we will confirm attendance at this meeting. So attendance, Kim?
Here.
Wendy?
Here.
Dane?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Melissa? Not online, okay. Alex?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Rebecca?
No.
Yes, we can hear you, thank you. Rebecca?
Here.
Betty?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
And David?
Here.
Great. So just, we do have, I'm going to skip to number two just to let the board know. We do have student representatives identified and they will start to do their reports at the November business meeting. So we don't have any students report tonight, but they will be here starting with the November business meeting. And we'll go from there. So then, Dr. Carr, if you're all set, I will ask Dr. Conway and his team to begin their presentation.
So good evening, everyone. We've got a short presentation for you tonight about remote learning, kind of what it looks like from the teacher's side as far as planning, planning out the lesson, curriculum, delivering that lesson, and then what it looks like from the student's side as far as navigating different venues and stuff. I'm joined tonight by actually four of those people. Mr. D'Angelo's Coach of the Year, MPA Coach of the Year, just voted that or recognized us that. Ms. Moran, our English Department Learning Leader. Mr. Smith, our BPA Learning Leader. And Mr. Saroyz, who is joining us virtually, is our Social Studies Learning Leader. So with that, we're going to jump right into the presentation. Which one are we starting off with?
So we're going to start this morning. Mr. Saroyz has put together a video and then uploaded it into a platform called EdPuzzle that allows you to embed questions and kind of make it a little more interactive for student instruction. But I'm going to let his video speak for itself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ellen Saroyz, the Social Studies Learning Leader here at the high school. And what you're watching right now is a video that I created on Zoom and then uploaded to EdPuzzle. EdPuzzle is a service that allows teachers to either upload videos they've created or select videos and on YouTube. Then the teacher adds multiple choice questions or structured response questions or notes at specific points throughout the video in order to check for student understanding and encourage teaching. EdPuzzle also helps teachers to see how much of the video students watch. So even if they don't want to ask questions during the video, they can still ensure that the student has viewed it. It's an excellent tool in terms of asynchronous, remote style learning. This video is actually an example of asynchronous learning. As you can see, I'm not physically in the room here tonight and I pre-recorded this video. The purpose of this video is to give you a snapshot of Google Classroom. Google Classroom is a platform that we've been using at my high school for several years now, but it's become a much more important part of our teaching. I'm going to share my screen here so that you can see what Google Classroom looks like from the teacher perspective. So when a student or a teacher pops on Google Classroom, they're met with the landing page which shows all of the classes you're teaching or all of the classes you're a student in. Right from the landing page, you can see that there are due date reminders, something I do today or do tomorrow. We're going to hop right into studies. And the first part of Google Classroom that you'll see in the class itself is what's called the screen. The screen is kind of like the Facebook newsfeed where the most recent post is situated at the very top. Looking down here, you can see that there are due dates listed. There are announcements. There are also assignments. This is a great way for ensuring that every student is given the same information.
So as you guys can see, normally when we are instructing students in person or showing them the video, we're stopping for understanding. And so this platform allows us to stop and kind of check understanding as we are pivoting that instructional component remotely. Behind me, Diana's pulling up, it is my agenda and this is what my students get sort of on a daily basis. And I'm just going to kind of walk you guys through one class of one day. And so this was actually my B2, which is my English 9, on Monday. And so this is kind of what our class looked like as we kind of pivoted remotely. So as you can see, behind me is a hyper document. One of my main goals as a teacher is to make sure that all of my students are able to access my curriculum and that hopefully they are doing so in an engaging way. We talk a lot in my class about the fact that I don't know what the world will look like when they get out of college or enter sort of that career that they will be having. But I know that there are certain skills that they're going to need. So I know that they're going to need to know how to read and write and communicate. And so as you guys can kind of see behind me, I've set up my agenda by some of those skills that I want them to be practicing on a daily or near daily basis. So the first one is we practice writing. And so you can see my first link is a daily check-in. And on this day, you know, it's a little hard to see, I had them zoom in and then I had them complete a Google form. And my Google forms on Monday are a little more extensive in terms of it gives me an opportunity to kind of take the pulse of how we're doing. And so you can see I've got a series of questions that I asked them to fill out anywhere from sort of a silly question of the day to asking what they need help with, to asking if they need to conference with me during my office hours on Wednesday, to asking sort of what, how they're doing. And so this is kind of an opportunity for me to check in with my students. And so, yep, you can see Diana's just kind of scrolling down. I do a quote and I do a picture. And that just kind of allows me to quickly, A, take attendance and B, just kind of see how we're all doing. If you don't mind going back, thank you. The next thing I ask my students to do is kind of write. You know, I think spending 10 minutes of writing every day is really, really important in terms of delivering that literary lifestyle. And so if you don't mind clicking on the next link, this is going to be an example of a prompt that I might ask my students to respond to and a prompt that I did ask them to respond to on Monday. And so I chose two quotes as sort of mentor texts from two different books that kind of grappled with the idea of before and after. And then I asked students to reflect on an example from their life where they felt like it kind of split their lives in half of before and after. And I got a chance to look at some of them and most of them did write about the pandemic. But I think having the opportunity to kind of reflect and talk on that is very important. Yep, so if you go back to the... The next thing I ask my students to do is read. And so for in-person, sometimes I'll give them up to 10 minutes to read in class at home. Or for homework, I ask them to read independently. I think choice and I think reading independently is really, really important in terms of growing as young citizens who are kind of able to engage and read our world. One of the things I usually do in my in-person classes that I've had to pivot remotely is I do book talks. And that's kind of an opportunity for myself to get to know my students and then for them to get to know me in terms of the books that I like. And so I've been actually recording them via YouTube, those book talks that I normally do in person. And now we've kind of created a padlet full of all of these book recommendations. And as they finish up their first... But you can see that's sort of what a book talk would look like for my kids. It's just kind of a two-minute, sometimes I'll read a passage, sometimes it's just a recommendation. But the kids will do theirs as they finish up their books too. And it's just kind of a great way for us to share some of those titles. The next one you'll see, and you should maybe recognize this platform because it's what Mr. Saroyz used, but this is EdPuzzle. And so what I did is I typically would do a mini lesson where I would use a Google slideshow or something where I would kind of teach my kids about a certain literary term and sort of introduce that curricular topic. But because I've got kids that are sort of accessing this asynchronously, what I do is I record myself talking over that Google slide. Is it in EdPuzzle?
Actually, I'm not in the classroom.
Okay, you're going to have to trust me. So you guys know that I'll kind of create a Google slide and I will talk about a topic of theme, so the one I was going to show you guys this theme. And then I record myself talking over that Google slide and I am able to embed questions, which is just a really quick way to kind of check in with kids in their understanding of that kind of mini lesson. And so on Monday, they sort of participated in that EdPuzzle lesson. After I've kind of done that instructional component, both for sort of in-person and then also obviously those kids that are accessing it remotely, I try to have them sort of create something or kind of play with that topic. And so for this, I had them read an introduction to the anthology we've been reading. It's called Fresh Ink and it's really built on really culturally responsive text. And so they would have read that introduction and then created a constructed response, which would just be sort of a paragraph, dealing with that sort of idea. Can you not get in with the sign? Of themes. And then the last thing I asked students to do is I asked them to take their independent reading book and I gave them a choice of three different ways to respond. So like a little bit of a choice board, summary, character activity, and then a write like the author. And they would, what they did on Monday is they selected one of those responses and they put it into what's called a Google question, which allows them after they've submitted to see everybody else's and then kind of respond. So there was sort of a discourse that came out of that, looking at sort of other people's responses as well. And so that's sort of one lesson in one day. And so I appreciate you sort of taking your time to kind of get a snapshot of what that looks like.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
When you insert questions into EdPuzzle, are they responding by type or voice?
So I...
Or did I miss something?
They're typing, no, they are typing.
Okay, so you're saying the question or you're typing the question in and then they have to provide you with a response?
Yeah, so for me, I'm kind of talking over it, but you can use pre-made videos as well. And then you can embed notes or sort of voice or questions. And so those questions will come up either as a multiple choice or an open-ended question. Being an English teacher, mine are usually open-ended and it gives students kind of an opportunity to sort of respond and then I can see everybody's responses and grade them later. That's a great question. Other questions? Yeah.
You said that they all read independently. Do you, where do they get the books?
So that's an interesting topic this year. I have a very sizable classroom library, which I love sharing with students. And so in order for them to access that this year, I had to upload all of those texts in a platform called Book Source. And it allows them to look at all of the books in my library. And then I can safely, once they've chosen a book, give it to them so they can use it that way. There's also, our media center has access to a lot of eBooks and so I talk students into that. And so some of them are accessed on the Internet, they can read them that way or Public Library or Barnes &amp; Noble. But that's sort of some of the different ways they can choose.
Okay, thank you. It's taken me two weeks to figure out the fifth book for my third graders. The issue is, school wasn't providing books. Not here.
Other questions? All right.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So you're in this school when you're doing all this, right?
So Monday I was not, I was at home. But yes, typically I am teaching from my classroom up at the high school.
So you're able to see all the kids at all times?
So most of my, in terms of on Monday or in terms of a day where I'm teaching in person?
A regular day.
A regular day? So I will have one of the cohorts in front of me. And then for the cohort that's at home, it varies. Sometimes I ask them to zoom in so that I can kind of check in with them. But most of those lessons when they're home, I'm creating asynchronously so that they can kind of access that autonomously at home.
So you have no idea how long they spend on it when they're asynchronous?
I don't.
Well, with some things we do with EdPuzzle, you know if they're accessing it.
Yeah.
You know if they're answering it. And if they don't answer it correctly, they have to go back and access it again.
And various lessons, I know it was really hard to see, but I ask the kids to time themselves. So obviously like reading and writing, that would be self-timed. And the EdPuzzle, I have timed it right because I'm reading to them or I am presenting to them. And so that sort of self-paces my class for me and scaffolds it in a way that I think would be as similar to in-person work as I could possibly get.
So in a regular time when you're in person? So you've got a group of kids on Monday, some of them are in front of you and some of them are at home. So on Tuesday, do you continue with the curriculum or do you do the same lesson again that you did on Monday for the kids that were at home? The ones that will be in front of you on Tuesday?
That's a great question. Given the time constraint, I move the curriculum forward. And so it's a new lesson in terms of, you know, really trying to get as much out of the scene as possible. And so every day is different.
Good, thank you.
I can just end with that. I think that one of the tricks and one of the things that Hannah models so well here is making the lesson accessible and interesting for the kids in person and the kids at home simultaneously every day. That's the challenge about hybrid, you have to make sure that you're moving the people forward. You're not teaching the same class two days in a row.
Hey Steve, sorry to interrupt, can you come to the mic, please? I just can't hear you. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that what Hannah is doing is modeling there is the fact that the students at home and the students at school are accessing the same lesson every day. And so the curriculum continues to move forward and that's quite a challenge. And you know, Hannah's a real star at understanding the technology and making that happen. But we have a whole bunch of other people, as you will see tonight, are doing very similar kind of work. So that's good job.
So on that note, we've got one more teacher who would like to share some of the really cool things that they're doing sort of to make that curriculum remote.
Presenting the visual arts, Jeremy Smith. And I have a prepared video. I'm just up here if you have any questions after.
So these are some of my hard goals that I am working on this year. Because I'm aligning curriculum that has been mapped, we've put a lot of work into over the last few years. I wanted to preserve as much of it as possible and with the hybrid instruction, make sure that what I'm planning for about will be some of these things that I, you know, or have been self-destructible with over the past few days. So you can kind of see them really quick here, that allowing for choice and opportunities to express ideas through instruction in the classroom environment. I want to preserve that idea of a classroom if some of the students are at home and some are, some are in school. So these are my overall goals for the year that I'm seeing and using as ways to ensure that my content delivery is sustaining as much of what I have planned as an teacher in the past. This is a document that I use and it helps me organize plans I have to do this year to ensure quality delivery for both parts of the hybrid, meaning at school and at home, and also to ensure that I'm preserving curriculum. So I've got my standard, my learning targets, what week we're in, activities, chunks in terms of what's can be done in class and what can be done at home, and then the big takeaways. This is a form that I acquired from a book called The Six Learning Playbook, which many people that are working in hybrid teaching situations are finding extremely helpful. I'm also putting in links to writing elements that I want them to do. And so then doing that over the course of five weeks helps me to make sure that I am not only delivering the content in the correct way, but also helping to link activities between week one, two, three, four, five. So I have this student named Test Kit. Test Kit is signed up for Intro to Art. So when Test Kit goes in to see what is going on in terms of assignments, the assignments that are in Google Classroom show up as the week, you know, so week one, two, three. And then there's directions and then there's comments and if it's graded and how it's graded. I created activities that are based on four different criteria. Some are complete, which means you do them and you submit a picture because for project-based learning in the art vehicles, that is visual and it can be captured with a picture. Reflect activities are, as you might think, you've done the work and now it's time for you to reflect on it. Yeah, do some writing, answer some questions. Sharing activities are ones that involve taking comments that you may have gotten or you've reflected and then shared those with other students and myself. And then presentation, it means you're, now that you're done with the other previous thing, here's what we need to do to sign up for the center work. Here's look at a slideshow that details careful directions for students. Earlier in the week, we did these things, we drew people and objects. We drew the figure in facial proportions, some of this is review. And then we created an image of work based on the boot in person. By week's end, to receive the how grade for the drawing, you would put those things on Slide 16, which is here, and then add an image of the natural graph. So this is where they put the natural graphics. Students are able to refer back to the slideshow as they complete tasks we've run over earlier in the week. You can click on the rubric and see...
So as you can see, I'm doing the same delivery style as Hannah, where I'm keeping the learning moving forward, which is a combination of asynchronous and synchronous. Do you have any questions at all? Mr. Conway's going to finish.
So yeah, that gives you an idea of what BPA goes through, the kind of performance arts, what, you know, what PE is facing, what art is facing, what music is facing, what industrial arts is facing, and how to deliver that content. And I think it gives a good idea of the intentionality and the work that goes into remote lesson planning when someone's in front of you and at home. And then with that, we're going to finish up the presentation on kind of how we're trying to engage kids and create discussions and still continue forward with the advisor program and that'll be Mr. D'Angelo.
So before I dive into that just briefly, I do want to mention that because I think some of you might have questions about this, is that every class is different and the needs of each of the students in that class are different. And so in my class, a science class, I teach physics predominantly. I teach probably 60 to 70% of my classes synchronously using Zoom and a document camera and an external microphone so the kids in the class can talk to the kids at home. And the kids at home are on Zoom, I had put the screen up on the LCD projector so that the class can see them. We have an external microphone so they can talk to each other. And typically, well, when I leave here tonight, I'm going to go over and play with the doc camera to try and figure out the right angles so that the kids at home can properly see the experiments that we're doing. You know, so it's interesting because one of the big challenges is every day is different. And every day, even if you've taught a lesson a whole bunch of times and you're not teaching it the same way anymore, so it's... But that is another model that some of us use and I use that a lot in my science class. But I want to talk to you just really briefly about a few different approaches our staffers using to engage our students. Because another real critical aspect of our work is caring for students' social, emotional health, right? Because they're weathering just massive disruptions from the pandemic that has brought to their lives, you know? And so we're doing this through contacts with students in our advisory groups, our in-person classes and online. And just a few of the things we've been doing that I think have been really effective, I've collected, is one is our PE teachers have been really creative with what they're doing. You can't do a lot of the kind of contact games that they've normally done. So they've been doing a lot of activities like taking their students on trail walks or frisbee golf or things where the kids can socialize safely at a distance outside at the same time. And that's something they really have been missing and that's a big deal. They love that, super love that. During synchronous remote teaching, a number of teachers, I know I've been doing this myself, I get on Zoom about five minutes early before the class is scheduled to start. The students know that and they'll get on and those just gradually kind of filter in and just shoot the breeze with them, you know, while they're coming into class. And just having that kind of contact really makes a difference to them, humanizes things a little bit. Earlier in the year, we talked a lot about just adjusting to the new normal and lately the conversations have veered more into hunting and dirt bikes and new pandemic hobbies. Many advisors have also been taking their advisees outside during lunch. If you, taking a walking mask break, if you eat lunch, you usually have time to circle the school two or three times on the sidewalk. And if you want to finish your dessert while you're moving, you can do it three or four times. A lot of us has also been using Zoom meetings for more than just classes. I meet with my advisees, for example, every morning, put the Zoom call up on the LCD projector again so that the in-person kids can see the remote kids and they love that. They don't get to see the kids in their other cohort in person in school ever, right? Because they're alternating. And so they love that. My entire group has been an advising group every day except one because they just love that. Hannah also mentioned that a Google form that she uses at her classroom... Hannah also mentioned that a Google form that she uses at her class, almost all the staff uses a Google form for attendance, but we also had check-in questions to give kids a chance to tell us if they need to meet with us, if they got issues going on, stuff like that. So we do that in the Google form. We all check that every day. And lastly, I'm going to just share one thing with you. I'm going to email it to you folks because I knew that we'd be short on time here and that is that Kelsey Beckford, one of our awesome teachers, did an activity with her students where she asked them to draft encouraging messages to their peers. And they were just like, they're beautiful. So we made a little Google slideshow of that and I'll send that to you guys by email. Okay? So we don't have to do that now. So the bottom line is, I think you can see that we're working really hard in class and I think that the teachers are just, they're blowing me away with how hard they're working this. We're also trying really hard to pay attention to the entirety of our kids' needs. Thank you for listening.
So I got a question. So everybody's been talking about the synchronous and asynchronous. Your class, how many people are actually?
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Yeah, you see that?
That was not me, Gary. I caught it. I know.
I have no idea. So how many people, does a kid get to decide if he's going to be asynchronous or synchronous on a day or is it already assigned before you?
It's already assigned because we have the two cohorts, cohort A and cohort B. Cohort A is in person on Monday and Thursday. Cohort B is in person on Tuesday and Friday. And when you're not in person, if you're doing a Zoom meeting with your teacher, you're doing, again Hannah talked about the idea of trying to do the same lesson for the kids who are at home or in school. So if you're at home and you were doing a Zoom lesson, you're watching the lesson on the Zoom call while the students at school are watching and doing the same lesson. Does that make sense?
So you have, how many at home and how many on Zoom?
Depends on the day. Sometimes they're balanced, sometimes they're not. I mean, like in one of my classes, I have a class of 16 students and 11 happen to be in one cohort and five in the other. But that's just the numbers, the way it works out, but roughly half.
And I just wanted to add, so when my students are accessing a lot of that work asynchronously, on a typical school day, I have Zoom up. And so the sort of instruction to them is if they need support or if they need to check back in, they have that opportunity. So I typically ask my students to check in at the beginning of class so I can make sure that, you know, we have that eye contact and I know that they're there and that they're present. And then I sort of have set up the work for them to access it asynchronously. But if they, you know, obviously I have my Zoom up and they have an opportunity to check in or ask questions.
Thank you.
How does all of this relate to when if we go to fully remote, especially for things like art, where kids may or may not have the, all the supplies needed? Or for physics? I assume you would do demonstrations instead of science experiments, the kids doing them. But how is all of this going to work out then?
Last spring, we got good practice at the full remote thing. And most to my wife's dismay, I turned two of our rooms at home into physics labs. And we'd come into school, take all that stuff home and do demonstrations and video them or show them live. And my hope is if and when we do go to all remote, that at least the teachers will be able to come into school because then I can do those in the lab and that's way better for many reasons.
For family happiness.
And I was just going to add, I think something important to remember is that from day one, we've had students who are accessing our curriculum remotely, period. And so as a teacher, I'm planning for kids that are in that cohort seat and that are home and that are trying to learn remotely. So we have, I have quite a few students who are full-time remote. And then I have other students that due to family situations are coming in person more often in terms of internet access and some other needs that need to be met. And so I think it was a little surreal on Monday in terms of the planning didn't look much different, right? Because I've been teaching kids remotely from day one. But obviously, the execution was a little different in terms of that model.
Sean Rutter.
First, I want to say I appreciate all the work that you guys are putting on this. I mean, it's hard work and it's, you know. But how many students are signing in on a daily basis? Do we know that? I mean, and how many kids, and how are those kids who aren't? How are we helping those kids? Because I've said this repeatedly, I'm not worried, I mean, about the kids who are at the top of their class or in the middle of their class. I'm worried about the kids who have four brothers and sisters at home and can't sign in, or the kids who struggle in the classroom. So how many kids are signing in and how are we helping those kids?
So I think that's a good question and this is just my experience, but my attendance numbers have never been higher in terms of my kids who are either checking in via Zoom or that Google form that we share. You know, obviously, it's not the same, but I think, you know, I have students who, you know, might have been homesick for other reasons, but who are still checking in. Similar with my advisee, I've had full, full check-ins in terms of the kids are at least making contact with me. And I think, you know, coming out of last spring, that was something as a staff that we felt was incredibly important of how we, how are we raising those standards and how are our expectations that we're making contact with those kids? And they are tied to attendance. So like my expectation is that all my kids are checking in within those 10 minutes because that's, that's when I take attendance. And the follow-up question in terms of kids that may be struggling, you know, I think that's a good one. I think, you know, for me, a lot of that is kind of rooted in reaching out to them after that feedback cycle, right? I see that they're missing assignments, you know? I had office hours this morning and I had a couple of students that I had asked to come meet me and most of them showed up, you know? And so I think it is a lot to kind of juggle, but I think we're doing our best considering. Zach couldn't answer your question?
Yeah, no, I got it. I just worry about those kids.
Absolutely.
It's tough enough when they're here in the building.
Yep. You know, and I would say I'm also, I teach with them that program and that's done a conversation, especially with that group. And, you know, as much as we can, just trying to kind of normalize that checking in, right? Like how are they using me in? How are they making sure that they're present and how important that is?
So it gives me a question for you, Conway. I mean, are you expecting that requirement of all teachers? I mean, I trust these teachers because they're one day. But are you requiring all teachers check in when kids are struggling? And are you kind of monitoring that?
Yep. We monitor, you know, we print reports for attendance and for failing kids. And we have different support systems set up with RTI and freshman team and advisors and doing it in a million different ways and could always be doing more of it and better. And it's a real fear of ours and yours, right? We really want to see them every day in person, like, you know, want that. But, you know, we are checking in with them and the attendance piece is super high because we're doing attendance each period, you know, for every kid, whether they're home or in person. So it's pretty accurate to that extent.
Thank you so much.
What about for the opposite? What about for the teachers who, I guess, struggle with remote? Are we doing anything to reach out to them to better prepare them to present to the kids at home or what's?
Yeah, and I think it's a great question. I'm going to bounce out because somebody else could probably answer that better. But, you know, it's like with in-person teaching or in-person principaling or anything, like we're, you know, we're all at different levels and we're trying to get better. So you're asking how do we support people in meeting kids' needs?
So two of the three teachers representing are really good with the technology. One, despite the fact he's a physics teacher, is not quite as strong. Okay? So first week, when we didn't have classes, but we are here, I know she got sick of seeing me in her room. So it's like, how do I do this? 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 You know? And so like the learning curve is super steep, but it's actually kind of invigorating because some of it is like really cool stuff. Like those Ed puzzle videos for physics are friggin' awesome. They are just amazing. They work so well to be able to embed the questions in there and see if they're answering them and know it. And, you know, because I would always do that when I show them in person and I hated the idea of just showing them a video, okay, watch this 10-minute video without the interruptions and the questions, you know? So you do it, so like, full credit, we're working super hard on that. No, we are not all as good at it, but I'm not kidding you. Everybody is trying really hard to get it and we're getting better. Because we have some people who are really good at it and they're willing to share it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, my status as a digital native has never been a hotter commodity.
I also wanted to put a plug in for IA and for music because, you know, it's not, let's look at a YouTube video, it's like going into the files and using, accessing all kinds of different, I mean, I looked into the Google classroom and saw the actual amount of tools in there that students can access and then basically respond with. And it's amazing. We're going into music theory and so there's more, there's a lot more stuff that we don't have time to tell you about tonight. There's so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports.
So I've asked, I know the principals do their weekly report, but I asked them to just come up in case there's any questions and just talk briefly about something positive that's happening at their school. And I'll start with Dr. Conway.
Sure. So really quickly, it's bus driver appreciation week, so just give a shout out for them. Our health center nurse, Anya, and Becca Reynolds are working incredibly hard, especially in recent times, to support us. We've had a pitcher day at the high school, back to some normalcy about a week and a half ago. And then we had a flu clinic about a week ago where our students were able to access it and teachers from the high school and the middle school were able to access it. So there's a lot going on. Any questions?
So has your attendance gone down?
No, not gone down. Right around the 95, 96%.
Thank you. But we were down 60 kids, right?
Yeah, I'll go over the numbers later. I got all the numbers to lay out for you guys, so.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Conway.
Thank you.
Dr. Levak, can I ask you to come up next?
Hi. So I would say, one of, I was trying to think of something that I hadn't talked about too much in my report and I, it's in the report, but I'm pretty proud of them. One of our biggest concerns this year was, it obviously is safety and with that, it's not just physical safety and wellbeing of our students, but it's also emotional safety. And we do have the new SEL program that we've been incorporating into our advisee time every week. But another thing was how do we also make sure that they can have some fun? Because we don't have activity time anymore, we don't have fall sports. So we have just under 20 clubs now, which are pretty awesome. And they are going to run, it doesn't matter if we're virtual or in person. There's clubs all over the place. I have Mrs. Magnuson in the back there. And so we have a sports fantasy club, which she's running. She's our phys ed teacher. We have an arts and crafts club that started today. And next week, they're making duct tape purses and it's, our art teacher is leading it, but there's a sixth grader who is like rocking it and really kind of, she's really the lead. Our art teacher is just kind of helping. We have a book club, we have a Minecraft club, we have, we're going to have a coding club. A lot of the clubs were decided by students and the students, we have a geography club, civil rights team. The students have reached out and emailed and they've really taken a lead, which has been really nice. It's not just older kids that are doing it. There's kids brand new to the school and sixth graders who are asking if they can, if we can have a club and what it can look like. And we're doing it at times when they're not, wouldn't be in class. So I'm proud of that. And then Dr. Conway had mentioned at the flu clinic, unfortunately, our flu clinic was supposed to be the September 29th and the 1st, so we did not have it, but we were able to reschedule it. So we will have a flu clinic on October 23rd.
Any questions for Dr. Levak?
Yes. So you make one statement and your parents and guardians, please email school if your child will not be participating in school on a particular day so that we can mark attendance accordingly. So let's say a kid doesn't call and you hit nothing. So I realize you're going to mark it on excused absence, but do you ever call that house and see where that kid is?
Yep. So automatically, it goes through the system. They always get a phone call. But then we also are keeping track of it and we keep track of it. With virtual, it's a little bit different. So we're doing advisee time in the morning and that's what we do attendance. And then we're checking, we send it out and teachers check to make sure that the kids are going. I wouldn't say every single time there's an additional phone call, but by and large, there's another call. And I would say one of the most difficult things these past two weeks.
So can a kid decide one day that he just wants to stay at home and do it virtually?
Not at this time. I mean, we've had parents call and say, we're going virtual today. We'll say, well, unless you're at home learning, you can definitely do your work from home. Awesome, we want you to do that, but it's an excused absence.
If you try to keep that to a minimum.
Yes, we have gotten a couple of those. We're, I'm going to do it from home today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Levak. Abby Hartford from Manchester Elementary School?
Well, I think the first thing I'd like to tell you is how happy the children are to be back in school. They come and Mr. Sharet was there one day last weekend, saw, they come running up the sidewalk, they come skipping in, they come, you know, just smiling the whole way out. They're just so happy to be together, to see each other, to learn. And I think that really loads into that SEL that we've been talking about tonight and how important routine is. And so that we're able to have our kids four days a week is a fabulous balance and we're, I'm thrilled that every day we get them in there because little kids don't have the independent computer skills that you saw here tonight, which is amazing. We're working to that. But they can't do that independently in our teaching at the lower, especially the K12, really involves teacher input over and over. So the more time we have in there and being critical of our time is hugely important. But we are well underway with our routine. You would be just shocked and amazed, and we are, how well lunch goes, routine of going up for snack, recess time, coming back in is hugely important. They are creative and imaginative in their play on the playground. There were two girls playing the other day and they were doing something and they had hands held and were going to twirl around like, you can't hold hands. In the blink of an eye, they were able to carry on the same dance routine and move without doing it by being four feet apart and still had a grand time. So their flexibility has just been shocking and amazing and we're just thrilled that we're able to, we don't have any battles with the mask, we don't have battles with behavior, knock on wood across everything I have, but we're just very pleased. A couple of different things we've been able to do, we did virtual open houses for families so they could get a visual picture of what it looks like in the school, in the classroom or the learning expectations. And on the first day of school, many children asked me if we're still going to have shout-outs, which is kind of our school-wide acknowledgement for children that are making gains in social skills or in learning skills. And so we assured them that we would still have it, but it would be different. So we charged the fifth graders with developing and choosing through discussion what would be our character traits that we would work with. And they chose four, to be responsible and safe, to be respectful, to be collaborative and cooperative, and the last one was be creative, imaginative and flexible, things that all of us have to be, the teachers as well. Then we have an all-school meeting with Zoom meetings. They, fifth grade hosted me and the kids were able to explain what the goals and expectations were. They made plans, they designed how we did the Zoom meetings. At the end of it, the kids told me we had done it wrong, we hadn't done the pledge, which was wonderful. That was first graders remembering from last year, that important component. So we'll put that back in. I was going to try to do it like every other week so that we could have, maintain as much time for classrooms as we could, but the kids and even the teachers were insisting we do it every week. So it's a way that we can have a school community virtually within the building. And it worked. It's not the same. We long for ordinary days, but we are making the most of every day that we are in.
Any questions?
In the report, you talk about Wednesdays and there's a whole long list of things that occur on Wednesdays. Do all of those things occur on every Wednesday?
Sometimes it's a menu of choice. So because we have different grade levels and they need different skills and they're in different places. Fifth grade got their Chromebooks and the amazing things are happening already with those kids. iPads are on order and almost here, they're knocking at our door, we're so excited. So everybody's, so there may be like a menu of choices that they're working from for the PD, so.
Is there time for individual planning during that time as well? Because I don't see that.
We have a pretty consistent pattern that usually the first hours for office hours, if they have questions from families that they need to answer to respond to and/or get. and/or get out the morning's expectations on Wednesdays for families. The next hour is for RTI meetings with our interventionists and such, if they need to schedule time with them. So we don't really start any of our meetings until nine o'clock. So they could have from 7:30 to nine, planning if they didn't have an RTI meeting or didn't have a lot of, you know, parent email to respond to and such. Then we have about an hour and a half of maybe some, like today, for example, our first hour was on assessment review, because we've changed how we're doing assessments this year. We can't do them quite the same as we have in the past. So we reviewed that. We reviewed what remote learning will look like, how we will be planning our days out. And again, that will look very different from kindergarten, what a kindergarten teacher would expect from children on, for a day of learning versus a fifth grader, because of independent computer skills primarily. So we discussed that and just gonna share options. Then they have time to plan for a couple hours and then we came back at 12:30 for one hour of shared time that was teacher-led in sharing how they're using Seesaw. Just there's so many layers within that and our learning curve is huge, but we're really on it. And really sharing and learning from one another. And so just informal share time was really important in the last hour they had. And that was optional. They didn't have to attend that. That's kind of where they're, by building a multi-layered menu. And I was in a meeting with some of, with the interventionists on RTI, what that will look like with our forums. So it's a lot of things happening all at the same time, but they're productive in those times. A lot of planning, you know, preparing for math. We still have the new math curriculum and so that takes, it's taken quite a bit of planning time to be able to map out how do you shorten lessons and use it, you know, in sequence and kind of stay consistently on, within the grade level across the district too, so that we map that out. So that takes some planning time and preparing time, so.
Thank you.
So did you loan instruments to the kids at home?
We did. The ones that are completely on remote learning, we were able to get an iPad to them.
No, I thought about, you were talking about music, I thought.
Um, music? No, there's no instrumental music this year at the elementary school.
Okay.
Too many, too much air. Although actually, they will be playing ukulele, kind of things that are stringed and aren't an instrument. So they will be doing that.
Sorry, Abby, I got a question for you. Or any elementary, sorry, you're first, so.
They'll have.
Whichever, whichever, how are the teachers doing with meeting whatever the grade level expectations are in that abbreviated? I mean, you're meeting four days, but they're shortened days. So in terms of what a second grader is supposed to know by this point in the year in English?
That's an excellent question, because that is a real concern all the time. But in grade level meetings, they are discussing and shifting and really prioritizing what the standards are within that. I will report that a lot of our kids came back with a lot of skills. They practiced a lot of things, that, you know, the pieces that we taught. And we're just like beyond thrilled with the kids. Some of our kids that were in interventions last year don't need them this year. I don't know how it happened, but we are just so happy. You know, and we're certainly looking for the ones who didn't practice and need extra support in prioritizing our time for them too. But we, just discussing in grade levels with the supportive curriculum coach, with our coaches and curriculum coordinator choosing our priorities.
So by choosing priorities, they're not gonna probably get everything?
Well, we really have a focus on reading, writing, and math. And when they can embed science and social studies into the literacy, they can do that. Oftentimes, Wednesdays, their homework might be a science, a mystery science. It's a length that they can do and if they're aligned to our curriculum. But those are not gonna be as, at this point, I mean, hopefully we'll come back in for those ordinary days, that we'll be able to pick that back up. But we're just making sure that they have the skills to read, the skills to write, and embedding the other units when we can.
Their stress level in terms of, I've seen some of them and how stressed they are to make sure kids know how to do this, this, and this, and this by whenever and.
It's not coming from us. That, you know, I mean, teachers are amazing people, but they put a lot of pressure on themselves and they know what they typically done. This is the way we do it. So being flexible and shifting that is a huge challenge for them. But we're trying to support them all the way through and saying, right, what's reasonable? What can we do?
And their SEL is okay with all that?
We are. I mean, that's important. I mean, it's, we need to take care of everybody through this. And that's why Wednesdays help, because you're on, I think the term I would use is you're hypervigilant through the day of where the kids are sitting and where, how they're moving through the room and things. By the end, by one o'clock, everybody needs that mask off. And, you know, we just need to breathe in our own rooms and replan and remap out the day. And same with Wednesdays to kind of ramp up and plan out those lessons, because they've got to be pretty succinct, so.
Thank you. Janet, do you mind coming up next for, I think Abby's almost said everything there, but I'll invite.
So I think one of our biggest takeaways is just what Abby said, that the students are, have continued to amaze us, all the teachers and ed techs, myself, in the buildings. They have come back to school almost like nothing has ever changed. They have been so well behaved and I really appreciate the support from families at home to remind them that because we care, we wear a mask, we socially distance, we use our own materials, we eat in our own space. And there's another one I can't think, oh, wash our hands. So we really have to be vigilant on those things and the students have been. And the parents have really helped us with that, so I can't thank them enough. The staff has been fabulous and working endlessly on all those curriculum endeavors that Abby was talking about, and it is a work in progress. One thing I'm really happy to see is that we, at our schools, the students, all students, any student can access free breakfast and lunch. And our numbers started out pretty low, but they're really starting to take off. So I'm really pleased. I do lunch at Wayne every Tuesday for both the K2 and 3-5. And the hot dogs are very good. And one girl kept telling me, this hot dog is so good. I was really happy. But the corn is not as good as mama's. So I said, okay, I'll let them know, but she was really sweet. But our second step curriculum is also done every day with our students and it's a part of our routine. So even though it seems and it is really different, it's also very much the same. So I'm excited to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Boston, last but not least.
I'm gonna keep the mask on if everyone can hear me, okay? All right. So first of all, I want to commend the middle school and the high school teachers and staff and administration for their recent events and how they transitioned through everything. I mean, I heard great things about the middle school and how smooth things went up there under a difficult situation. What you saw tonight from the high school, that's amazing. That's what we're trying to get to at the elementary level. But that is a lot of hard work. If you've ever had to plan a lesson or anything, it's not easy. And they're doing twice, in-person and remote. So, you know, kudos to you guys. Nice job. With that being said, a couple of things. We had our first virtual parent-teacher, well, actually, open house night on the 28th. That went well. We are in the process of creating remote schedules for when, not if, when the elementary have to go remote. And we're taking a look at Zoom expectations, so we can get those routines in place. We're also receiving a lot of PD on our Wednesdays and during faculty meetings from the tech department on Seesaw. And we had one today on Loom, which is a, I guess, an app that's similar to Screencastify. And I'm learning a lot as we go. With that being said, we've heard a lot of good things. The reality too, you have to know as a board, is we have 18 hours a week. Okay? And that doesn't include, that includes lunch, snack breaks, everything else. So the reality is, we're doing our best to provide a quality education with a reduced amount of time and a lot of guidelines where we figure one thing out and then something else changes on us and we have to take a few steps back to move forward. So we are working very, very hard. We'll continue to work hard. But you need to know that at the same time, time is limited and that does have an impact on kids. The other thing is, I want to thank the Reed Field parents. I haven't been hit yet. I'm still got both my legs. I'm out there directing traffic. Sean, thanks for looking out for me. And any questions? Sean?
I'll ask you a sincere question. How many, like, what's the attendance rate at the schools? Not just like, but like on a daily basis, kids that are supposed to, that say they're gonna show off?
Yeah, no, it's, 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 it's good. It's, we're getting the kids that are supposed to be there. They're showing up. I think you've heard it, the kids want to see each other. And you've heard it from the high school, even though they're at home, they really enjoy being in class and having that connection with their friends and their teachers. So the attitudes from the staff, faculty, the parents, the kids have been great. And especially from the parents, the support, because it is hard to send your kid to school when you have news and the viruses, whether it's at a state or a national level, and making that tough decision on making sure your child's safe where you're sending them, so.
No, I think it's been great. I mean, I try to keep, you see me every day.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's been good.
I think, but I think one thing is, is that kids do want to be in school. And I think as much as it's a stress on the teacher, it's a stress on the kids, especially the older kids that know what they're missing out on. My daughter knows she's missing out on the van. She was looking forward to that. She was looking forward to the field trips. I ask me every day, mom, are we gonna go to school this? When can we go to school more? And I hear that with their friends on planes. They want to be in school. And they want to learn more. And they feel that, not because anyone's doing anything wrong. They realize that things are a grand, you know, kids are smart. But they know their mom, like, they know and they feel that, they want more from their learning. I just hope that, not, not that our school's fault, but our kids need to be in school five days a week. And the reality is, is it's gonna be a sad, sad day when it's full remote learning.
No, I agree. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mazur, would you like to add anything for special ed? Oh, yes, if you'd like to, yeah.
I just wanna say, I said the shout-outs are better, so I really want shout-outs for our custodial staff. They are nonstop. This is a gony, thought too fast. They have taken on and it's continual and it's, they are vigilant and they're working exceptionally hard to have our kids in school safe. And I just say, and I just wanted to let me know that and say thank you to them.
Thank you.
A little bit. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on a previous board report. I think I wrote it back in, probably wrote it in August for September for individualized remote learning plans. So I couldn't underscore enough back then how much work that was gonna be for the staff, especially the case managers of the 150 or so students who have individualized education plans. So we have spent since that time contacting parents, really communicating with them, what would it look like if we went remote? We've had to do that now at middle school and high school and their efforts were greatly rewarded. We were able to shift pretty seamlessly to make sure that we were able to maintain direct services for students, even though in a virtual fashion. Wednesdays have been, they've been quite busy. We've been trying not to have meetings, especially IEP meetings during the school day, because the instructional time is so valuable. But, so that means that Wednesdays for me, typically, I think I had eight or nine Zoom meetings today, six IEP meetings, this board meeting tonight, and the staff are doing a great job of scheduling those. Those are not easy. But I heard from every parent today, and there were a lot of middle school parents today that were really pleased with the proactive communication and planning and the way that I was able to transition. So I wanted to give a shout out to that and really follow up on the fact that that was a lot of work. So those are, I mean, just to put that in perspective, you have 150 student plans. You need to update the IEP itself at a new document that is that remote learning plan. Map out how you're gonna do it, how you're gonna communicate with families, get individual input on each one of those, and then write a written notice outlining why you're gonna do that. And that's happened well in advance of this. So we could be in a place today that we're not reactively scrambling. So I just wanted to follow up on that and give a lot of kudos to staff for being able to do that. I don't know if anyone has questions or did Abby get them all?
I see none. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And Steve Vos for adult education.
Good evening, everyone. So I want to talk quickly about three aspects of our program. First is HISCET. HISCET programming, we're about on course for where we would usually be. We have four students who are meeting face-to-face and they're doing so at the Professional Development Center. We're also running our CBL program. We have eight students. That's a little bit lower than we normally have, not by much, but a little. And that class is running very successfully. And we're paying very close attention to the state guidelines to make sure that we can continue to operate that, since the students right now are in the classroom, but very soon they'll be in the truck driving very close, obviously, to the instructor. So we'll continue to monitor that. The last aspect of our program is enrichment. And we currently can't hold any enrichment activities at the high school. So as you can imagine, that is kind of put a damper on what we typically would offer out to our communities. We are, however, really looking at and expanding our online opportunities. And we did run approximately 20 different programmings, programs through online for this semester. And we're looking at expanding that to 40. This is obviously a huge undertaking. I can't simply go up to an instructor, like my stained glass person, and say, hey, why don't you do an online class? You really have to provide them with the tools that they need, the hardware, the software, and the training to get to the point where they create a product that people actually want to buy. And with so many things online that are such high quality currently, we need to get to that point. And we understand that that's gonna take time, but we are going to get there. Any questions?
See none. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the reports for the people that are here. I'll just, very quickly, please notice on, for, see on the agenda all the upcoming subcommittee meetings that will be happening. And those people who are on that committee know that at this point. So we will, at our next November meeting, we will designate someone to report out from those committee meetings. You'll have the minutes, but we'll also report out once we get those committees started and someone will be designated from the board to do that brief report out. But I did want to draw your attention to those subcommittee meetings have started or will be starting shortly in the next week or so. Betty, please, yes?
I didn't know about this awesome bear. So if they have meetings, it would be awesome to know. It would be awesome to know when the awesome bear bears are meeting.
We will, we'll follow up, get their meeting events and get them to you, so.
This is when we have negotiations, so I won't be going. So there will be no report.
Yep. Does happen. So on that note, I'll turn it over, back over to Dr. Karf for citizen comments.
Citizens' comments. Steve DeAngel.
Hello again. I suspect you can hear me just fine with a mask on. Is that true? Too muffled? Is that better? Sounds better to me. All right. So I have to say that I have been dreading the next three or four minutes for about the last four days now. Super nervous and I think, though, that this is so important that it's, I just have to do it anyway. So in the last two weeks, there have been several cases of COVID-19 in the Marantica community, right? I'm not telling you anything you don't know there. But I am here tonight to raise concerns and questions regarding these incidents. I mean, you already heard about what I think is the spectacular work our high school staff is doing in engaging with all their students. In my over 40 years of teaching, I don't think I've ever seen a group of teachers rise to the challenge with such an impressive level of dedication and compassion. They're amazing. And so I'm here today to speak out, in part for my colleagues who've been working tirelessly. But to be honest, I think and we believe, we're faced with an administration that has not been as transparent as they need to be about the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. While I'm speaking as a community member who's also a staff member, this is also a tremendous concern to our students, parents, and the whole Marantica community. So as you're aware, on September 28th, the Marantica community was notified that a middle school student had tested positive for COVID-19. A number of middle school staff had been exposed to this student and were asked to quarantine and get tested. The middle school was put on full remote learning for the next two weeks. And then on last Friday, we were notified that a high school student had also tested positive for COVID-19. The high school has been fully remote since. These events alone are not what concerns me and many of our staff members in isolation. It's because we understand that in-person teaching It's because we understand that in-person teaching presents certain risks, but we believe that it can be worth the risk to see our students in person. You've got several of the elementary teachers I've seen spoken tonight about how much the students love being back at school. And it's the same way for our high school kids, like in spades, okay? Their behavior has been amazing because of that. So I get that, right? But it's a great concern to the staff, the students, and the community is the lack of transparency about the events surrounding these cases. While we were notified on Monday, the 28th, about the positive test for the middle school student, it soon became clear that the district likely had knowledge that a student had been exposed to COVID as soon as the Thursday prior and was being tested. The question I want to ask is why were the staff, parents, and community not made immediately aware of the potential exposure? This lack of transparency betrays the trust of our community. There are three reasons why that lack of transparency is so hurtful. The first is in regards to staff safety. If we're going to ask the staff to take the risk of in-person teaching, the district must be fully transparent. We have staff members who are medically compromised, who put themselves at risk every day just by being in school. They needed to know what the district knew as soon as possible, so they could make informed decisions about what is best for their health. And this is not just hypothetical. Last Friday, when five high school staff were told that they were exposed and needed to go home, quarantine, and get tested, well, that exposure happened on Monday, the 28th, the day we found out about the first positive case in the middle school. The second reason is that our community deserves to know what is happening in our schools. The entire community needed to be informed as soon as possible, so they too could make educated decisions. What if the student was exposed at school, didn't know that was a possibility, visited their grandparents over the weekend, but did not know of their exposure until Monday? It is frankly dangerous to not immediately inform the community of potential exposure. This sort of negligence is exactly what promotes the spread of the virus more broadly within the community. Not be scared of it, but we have to communicate what we know. Critically, I also think that this makes it hard for teachers, students, and parents to feel like we can totally trust the district and their decisions. The final reason relates to the safety and trust of our students. The failure to inform the staff and students of what is happening, of course, endangers all of us. And it critically affects the sort of behavior and decision-making we are trying to model to students. But last Friday, we were notified about the positive COVID case in the high school. We heard about it over the intercom at the end of the day, that all after-school activities and the cross-country meet on Saturday were being canceled due to the weather. One of the students in my room blurted out as that announcement was going on, why are they lying to us? There's another COVID test for sure. I already know. I don't ever want to answer the question, why are they lying to us? There is no good answer. As educators, we are supposed to be modeling and teaching values like honesty. It has become increasingly hard to do so under these kind of conditions. Our administration needs to model the exact same behavior. We are trying to teach our students to make informed decisions and be responsible citizens. We can't teach them that when we as a district are not modeling that behavior. We want our teachers to be comfortable coming to school. We want our parents to feel comfortable sending their kids to school. The lack of transparency hurts that. I understand there are privacy issues to be addressed, but the exposed persons do not need to be identified. The staff, students, and parents should have just been told that a student had been exposed to COVID and was being tested. We aren't asking for personal details. We're asking for the bare minimum to protect our community and create a safe place for staff and students. So I asked the board tonight to consider seriously some important issues. First, our district policy needs to be very clearly communicated to parents that if a staff or a student member or staff has been exposed to COVID and had a test done, they should not come to school until they get a negative test result. It's not the ideal situation, but the reality for most people in the country is it takes two to four days still to get test results back. I hate that idea, but it's the facts. No one who has potentially been exposed to COVID and has been tested should be in school while they await the results. This is common sense, and it also increases our chance of keeping our kids in school where they want to be. I'm asking the administration must be more transparent about the decisions they are making regarding COVID. It is for the safety of the staff, the students, and the community. And I ask the board to hold the administration accountable when they fail to address these COVID incidents with complete openness. I've spoken to a number of parents, teachers, and community members who agree that the most important thing is that the district stays honest and remains a trustworthy institution during this crisis. I know you have other issues. I know you're going to meet an executive session. But somehow you need to find the time to discuss this with the administration, to ask what they knew and when they knew it. And we as a staff need to know from this point forward that the administration will be completely transparent with staff, students, and parents regarding important COVID health-related issues. Please make sure that we as a district are transparent and accountable all the time. We are a community school. We need to be given all the information we need to make informed health decisions for all of our community, including our staff, our students, and our families. Thank you very much for listening.
And that also goes for the parents of all kids in this school, that they keep their kids home when they've been tested positive. Moving on.
There, I just have, there is a question on the, I know it's new. I don't even know what it's called, but whatever that text is that I get every day that my kids supposed to go to school. There is an actual question that says, have you been exposed to someone who's had a positive test result within the last, is it 14 days that we fit in there? And so if a person responds no to that, obviously, it is, we have to take it at face value. If a person responds yes to that, how does the system work? Do we have that student's name that's associated with the parent who just filled that out? Is that how that works?
Yes. So there's a red flag. Well, I say red flag. The nurses see who answer, who maybe potentially is not coming to school, who is all set to come to school, and then who didn't answer it. So if they say yes, the nurses are following up with families for students. They're typically making phone calls and just kind of following up with that to make sure that if it is like COVID related, that they're.
So does, does the system then say, don't come to school until you've spoken to a nurse? Or how does that, or are they just, parents just supposed to know that?
They basically get a message that says you should be.
Until you speak to someone, don't come in.
School nurse, right? And then the nurse is going to refer them right away to their primary care physician because nurses can't diagnose. But yeah, good question.
So were you able to talk to the CDC about taking temperatures on the, on the bus?
No, I did put a call in. They're still not recommending it. So.
That's stupid.
Yeah. Yeah.
Totally stupid.
So can I ask a question? Hi. What, my internet is going out like every three seconds, but I think I heard Steve DeAngelis ask us a question and ask us to address the question either publicly in this meeting or create a plan to address it in some other forum, but can we do that?
What's your question?
Well, his, his question is how can we, what happened with the situations that, the two COVID cases that were happening? And how can we be assured moving forward that whatever lack of transparency occurred or allegedly occurred, how can we make sure that that won't happen again?
So, yeah, Patty, I'm going to jump in. On the agenda, number eight B talks about school and co-curricular updates. And I have something that you wouldn't have access to at this time, but is in the board packets that does talk about the decision-making process for the notification of a positive COVID test, whether it be student or staff. So I would say after you hear that, if it still needs to be addressed at that time, certainly the board can do what they need to at that time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
I just understood the question to be that, to find out when the information was available and if it was not communicated to teachers.
Yeah, that's in this that I'm going to share with you guys.
Okay.
Okay?
I think what I want to make sure we're really clear about is, is one of the things I'm asking is not just about knowing when there's a positive test. But if we know that a student has been exposed and is being tested, we feel very strongly that information needs to be communicated to the staff at the very least. You know, I would say the vast majority of staff would say, we don't know yet. We feel comfortable coming to school, but some people are medically compromised. They're taking big risks by being here. You're not violating anybody's privacy by just saying, we know that we've had a student exposed. We don't know what the test results are yet. We think you need to know that.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I don't think we need to be telling people when students are being tested for COVID. Students get tested for COVID for many different reasons. My son has allergies. I'll tell you, he gets tested often. I don't tell this to awesome every time he gets tested. We need to stop spreading fear amongst people. And I feel that's what you're doing. And when I can disagree, but that's what you're doing. Every time a student gets a test, you are spreading fear amongst parents and staff. And we need that spread fast, not fear. And I don't think that is people's information when students are being tested. Strongly disagree with you. And I operate on facts, not fear.
If I can, I heard the request to be if someone was specifically exposed, not tested.
But even if you, how would you know factually that somebody was exposed? I mean, just because I was around somebody who was, had a symptom of COVID-19, that doesn't mean that they had COVID-19.
Right, but if.
If someone has a symptom of COVID-19, we're going to have to broadcast it to the world and we're going to be sending a lot of broadcast messages.
I don't think that's it. I think it's if you have, if you have had specific exposure to someone else who has already tested positive. That's what I would say is exposure, not exposure to someone who has had symptoms. If you have had exposure to someone who has, so for example, if I am a family of three and I test positive and I, my daughter obviously is then exposed to someone who's tested positive. So I think the request is if then that information could say, okay, whatever school my daughter is in, could you let the teachers know that she was definitely exposed to someone who tested positive? Not because I have symptoms, like I could be completely asymptomatic, but if I've tested positive and my daughter has been exposed, she's still been exposed to someone who has tested positive. It's very different than just.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
It's very different than just being exposed to someone who has symptoms.
I think Dr. Jay is going to talk about this later.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary, for listening. And Sean, I, I have to say, and we can agree to disagree, but don't tell me I'm operating out of fear because I would not be here every day as a person with heart disease, willing to still come and teach. Okay, so don't tell me I'm operating out of fear.
You want to spread fear and you want people to know if they've been tested.
Knowledge is not fear, Sean.
So moving ahead. So we're down to item number six. So just, I was brought a question, which I think is vital, that we need to put it on the calendar so that we can keep it moving forward. And that is with weighted grade point average. So I asked Dr. Conway to think about that subject because on all the, I, I've done scholarships for eight years for an organization. And I have never seen a weighted greater point average, but I talked to Wendy and Alex and they both have acknowledged it. So I think at this point, we need to take a look at that, and we're going to do that at another time. And we're going to have Wendy issue a statement so that we can move ahead.
Or a motion?
Yep.
A motion.
We're going to make a motion so we get it on the record, so we keep it, to address this issue.
But you wanted the curriculum committee to address it, correct?
At this point.
Okay.
And then it's going to have to go to the policy after that.
Well, a motion to take the weighted GPA discussion to curriculum committee for further consideration.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, I have to do, I have to do a roll call vote, sorry. There we go. So, sorry, Kim.
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yep.
There we go. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, action items.
Can I ask a question about that motion, though? When it, when the conversation comes to the.
Uh-oh. We may have just lost her.
Hang and chat.
I would suspect, at least for me, the question is, but I'm expecting it, is that it would go to the curriculum committee, policy committee, but it will not go anywhere further until the board has heard about it and considered it and voted on it.
Somebody can do some research on it. How many people are involved? Does it really help all the.
Yes.
Advanced students? I don't think it does, but maybe it does. Dr. Conway should have an idea on that. Because I have no idea because I have yet to see it. And I had one kid to go to Harvard. I couldn't believe it. And he didn't have it. So. Anyway, we're moving ahead.
I move to approve the minutes of September 16th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, roll call. Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty? Is still missing in action. Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to accept the donations.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty? Still not back. Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And unanimous for all that voted.
I move to accept the nomination of online elementary teacher Amy Tucker as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I'll just give you guys a little information. We've got, Amy is actually a middle school teacher that took a leave of absence for this year. So she's going to be working for us one day a week, helping to do plans for those students that have chosen at-home supported learning. She's got four Ed texts, two from Manchester and two from Mount Vernon, that will be working with her and will be using some of their Wednesday time, will be directly impacting those at-home supported learners. So, and she started actually last week and has started to devise plans and contact those families. So during the course of last week, the end of last week, and then going through this week. So during the course of last week, the end of last week, and then going through this week and into next week, we should have all of those learners accounted for and taken care of. And they should have plans and they should be moving forward. And the goal is to get them as much information as we can, as quickly as we can. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it is kinda up and running at this point.
So it's like 60 of them?
There is 50, it just went up to 52 today, two more joined today. So 52 K through five, so.
And those four, those four ed techs and the teacher are going to be able to connect and make the remote learning good for those.
Yes, yes. Those are some of, honestly, those are some of our, they, those ed techs volunteered and the ones that volunteered are outstanding at what they do. So we're very lucky that we've got them willing to take on that role for us, because they're really good at what they do. So we're expecting good things to happen now for that group of students.
I, I question, I question one day a week?
Yeah. She's starting with one day a week, and she may approach us about increasing that time, but that's all she would commit to at that point. And frankly, I didn't have any other options at that point, so I took what I had. But I expect she'll probably increase her time. She's already kinda hinted at it. But I'll keep you guys informed on that for sure, so.
Thank you.
One, I think it's cool that we could use one of our own teachers. And my daughter had her, and she was on Moose. And she was always the tech person on Moose. So I'm pretty sure as far as her skill level is concerned, for the remote stuff, she's probably gonna be quite good at it. Also, as far as her salaries, I know, I remember approving her leave of absence. So as far as her salary is concerned, we're doing a percentage based on whatever.
Right.
As of right now, one-fifth kind of thing?
Exactly, like per diem, one-fifth time. Exactly right.
Cool. I think it's great.
Roll call.
All right, Kim?
Apparently, that's a yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Ooh, she's back, yay. Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Now it's the appointment of someone to be a local delegate and alternate for the MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly.
Yep. So if you're in your packet, it's page 22 of 237D. It gives the purpose of the MSBA Delegate Assembly. The conference this year, on the backside of that page, there's information about the conference. We were gonna talk a little bit about it again on, what is it, 8A? But while we're there, it's a virtual conference this year. For those of you, there's a, there's quite a few actually in this room that have been to that conference. It's usually a two-day, a fairly big two-day conference held at the Augusta Civic Center. School board members, superintendents come from basically around the state for it. This year, they're doing it virtually, and they changed it a little bit. Normally, they do it on a Thursday and a Friday. And this year, they're gonna do it on a Friday and a Saturday morning. So it'll be done by noon time. And then, so during the course of that, there is an MSBA Delegate Assembly. So obviously, that, the duties are kind of outlined there. I know, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, you've done it the past couple of years.
About three years.
Kathy did it last year.
I did.
Kathy did it last year.
Oh, Kathy did it last year as well. Oh, that's right, okay. So it's a really good experience. It's where you get one vote per district, and they will talk about resolutions that they're looking at adopting, trans, excuse me, transacting any business that has to go before the Executive Board of Directors, elect officers, executive board members. And they may adopt amendments to the Constitution. So that's basically what happens during that time. So as you guys are considering that, that's why we bring it to the board to see, number one, if you'd like to go to the conference, we can talk about that on 8A. And then we, hopefully, will have somebody to represent RSU 38 at that delegate assembly during the course of it. Usually, it's on the first day, towards the end of the first day. So it'll probably be on Friday, more than likely, but I haven't seen the full schedule yet. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board, and you guys can decide who, if anyone, would like that honor. And I know Gary's done it, Kathy's done it, so they can talk a little bit about it as well, if, if there's questions.
So I wrote it on my calendar. But if others are gonna go, I don't mind. I wrote it down.
Should we see first who might want, who might be going?
Who would like to go?
Nominate Kathy.
You wanna go?
Who wants to go to conference?
The conference is cool, because they usually have a good keynote speaker.
Yep.
And there is, you get to see what goes on in some of the other institutions of learning.
They have really good sessions that are very informative as a board member. So it's really worth going to.
And you can find out about charter schools and everything else that goes on. I was really amazed. And you, how many students do they really have? And what accomplishments they achieve? I thought, wow, wait a minute. I had some questions for them.
So as you're thinking about it, just know that usually there's a deadline for registration. And just reach out directly to myself or Donna, and we can get you registered. That's not an issue at all. We'll send a reminder at some point about the date. But we certainly, anyone that's wanted to go in the past, we've always made sure that they've been included. I know Melissa's been, Alex has been, Kathy has been, Wendy, Gary, Betty has been. Kim has been, that's right, you went last year, didn't you? That's right.
The keynote speaker this year is one of the breakout groups that I went to last year. He's quite good.
So, so you don't have to decide right this second, but it would be good if we knew, if someone was going, if we could identify that delegates for the assembly, just because it, it's kind of important. We usually notify them ahead of time so that you can get in with no questions asked, so.
I move we nominate Kathy for, as the delegate.
Second.
That was a quick second.
We were.
All right, I'll do a quick roll call vote then. Kim?
Sure.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Sure.
Now, nobody asked her if she wanted to. I don't know.
Yes, they did. They did.
Okay.
I did, yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously, so we've identified.
Don't we need an alternate too?
Yes, we usually need an alternate. Donna's shaking her head yes, so we need to do that as well.
Gary, did you wanna be an alternate?
I don't mind.
I move that Gary be the alternate going to the MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly.
Second.
All right. I don't think there'll be any discussion, so very quickly, Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
All right. That also passes unanimously. Thank you. We've got our delegates identified. That'll be helpful.
I move to appoint the first probationary contract teacher, Wendy Breaman, to the math interventionalist.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
And so, Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Information.
So we just talked about the ball conference. Just a reminder, if you're interested, please reach out to myself or Donna, and we'll get you registered and get all the information you need. Donna, do you wanna?
I'll send out the information on it, and there is a deadline.
Okay.
But I'll send out the deadline.
Okay, sounds good.
So you got two already.
Yeah, all right.
I'm emailing right now.
So then, the next thing was, I wanted to do COVID-19 updates to the school. I know in the agenda, it's listed as school and co-curricular updates, but just wanted to give you guys some general information about things that are going on so that you're aware of them. The first thing, in your folder, is a paper with a flowchart that I'm going to quickly walk you through in terms of what would happen if we have a positive case from a student or staff. So, and I'll just kinda run through it, and then if you guys have questions, certainly, please ask those questions. So all of this information is taken from the main standard operating procedure and CDC guidelines. So we put this together to help kind of answer the question of how is this all gonna kind of come together? So it's really important to note here that a positive case could come from a parent calling us and saying, "My son or daughter just tested positive." It could be a healthcare provider, their primary care physician. Or it could come from the CDC, who calls and says, "We have on record a case. It's one of your students," et cetera. This flowchart that I'm gonna walk through, under guidance from the CDC, a probable positive case may initiate this process as well. But we can't initiate this process on our own. We need guidance from the CDC to do that. Our primary point of contact is going to be our school nurses in the buildings, okay? So when a nurse gets information that says there's a positive case, then they're gonna do three things. They're gonna contact the Department of Education. They're gonna contact the CDC if they have not heard from the CDC already. And they're gonna contact myself. If a staff member, you'll notice on the left-hand side at the top, we put a little bullet in there. Because of the way our advisee, advisee programs work, especially at the middle school and high school, it's very possible that a staff member could have a student that communicates and says, "I've had a positive test." If that's the case, we're asking that staff member to report it directly to the nurse as soon as possible. If the nurse is not available, then they should be going to the building administrator as that first kind of step there. So the nurse is then going to contact those three people. Then what they're going, I am going to do is I am going to go to the building administrator immediately. And I'm gonna contact the transportation director to see if that student rides a bus and get a bus list from that person. So we have all the necessary information we need. The building administrator may need to talk to the student services director, especially if that student participates in any co- or extracurricular activities. So that will be something that the building principal will take care of with the, with the student services director. Now, what's going to happen is the administrator and the nurse are going to sit down together, and they are gonna develop a list of what would be considered close contacts. Close contacts, according to the main SOP, is any student, any contact where you've had 15 minutes or more time together, usually six feet or less. In the SOP, it says very clearly that if a student is sitting in class for the entire class period, everyone in that class is considered a close contact. That's staff and students. It says that in the main DOE guidelines. So the principal will sit with the nurse, and they will go through that list of close contacts. They will look at all the classes the student attends, what bus they ride. I will provide that to the nurse. And then we will get, if they participate in any co- or extracurricular activities, we will get that as well. They will generate a list of those students. Then the nurse's responsibility is she will talk to the students and families if they are considered a close contact. It will be the nurse that makes that call. If the student needs to go home, which is what happened in the middle school case, we had to actually send students home. So they immediately, she starts calling parents, and they immediately get sent home. They are, it is not an option to ride the bus home. They need to get picked up by their parents as soon as possible. So the nurse will make those calls. And then you'll see what the current guidance is. And again, this guidance changes, people. So please remember that as you're looking at this, guidance changes. So the guidance, as it stands currently, is that you do a 14, the student is expected and staff is expected to quarantine for 14 days from the last date of exposure. Exposure is calculated. So when you first show symptoms, you back up two days, and then you start counting your 14 days forward after you've backed up two days. If you go for a test, then you are considered, they kinda consider you positive on the day of the test. Whether it's positive or not, they're gonna back up two days and then count your 14 days going forward. So then they are going to recommend that you get a COVID test, those students. Notice the word now is recommend. It is not a mandate any longer. That's changed just in the short time since we've had cases. It is recommended that any close contact get a COVID test within five to seven days. So again, I wanna stress, the word is recommend. It's not mandate. Then, working with the CDC and the school nurse, they will determine what the return-to-school date is for those close contacts. The nurse will have that recorded. The CDC has that recorded. And for people's information, the CDC, we provide the close contact information to the CDC. They will be entered into a program called SARA Alert that the CDC then uses to track the results of the testing in the quarantine period. They do that. We don't do that. All we do is provide the information to them. They do that. From my understanding, is that CDC will make direct contact with the families in the course of that quarantine period. I'm not gonna say it's gonna happen that day or even the next day. It may take two or three days before they hear from the CDC. That's one of the reasons why the nurse, under the guidance of the CDC, will get, share that information as quickly as possible. Now, the building administrator, and my building administrators have been fantastic when it comes to talking with staff. The building administrator will be the one to talk to staff that is considered a close contact, okay? And they will be using the same information that they're giving the student close contacts. So then, this is all going on. What am I doing now? So at this point, I am now going to have to make a decision about whether we're going remote or not, or what the, the time in or out is going to be. So that's what I have to do. Now, I will talk to the CDC. In both of the cases, I talk directly to the CDC person that was assigned to each different case. There will be a different CDC person assigned to each case. So if I'm a case, and I'm gonna use Dr. Carr just as an example, and he's a case, I have a different contract tracer from the CDC than Gary has from the CDC, okay? So we have to, we're, we're talking to multiple people at the CDC here going forward. So then, after all staff, and I think this is really important, after students have been taken care of and their families have been taken care of, then we're taking care of our staff next. Then I will ask the principal to arrange an emergency staff meeting with, excuse me, will notify the staff and set up a staff meeting so they can debrief and give them the necessary information. The principal will also contact our facilities director, who's Sean Drinkwater, so that way we can have a discussion about what cleaning needs to take place and how much time it's going to need to do that, okay? So once we know there's a case, we're automatically going into deep cleaning mode, which is part of the DOE SOP. Sorry, I hate to use acronyms like that, but that's kinda what it is. So then, I will talk to the principal, and we will make a decision about if it's- and we will make a decision about if it's remote, how much time, all that kind of stuff. As soon as I've talked to the principal, then, I'm calling the board chair, or if he's not available, the vice chair. So, in all of these, those people are informed about what's going on and what the decision-making process will be. Then, from there, I will notify the district staff, and then I will get a community letter out as well. And you guys have seen two of those already. Somebody asked me once, "Well, what's the timeline of this?" So, on this page, the first bullet says, "It will be instituted as soon as the nurse has confirmation that it is a positive test." We work with DOE and we work with CDC. I want to make that very clear. We do not get to make a decision by ourselves based on, Sean Roderick just called and told Jay Sharet, the superintendent, that his son has COVID. I need to consult with DOE and I need to consult with CDC before any call is made. That's really important, that people don't think that anyone in my administrative team is flying by to see their pants, because they're not. And it's blatantly false if we get accused of that. Then, we will notify the community, as I had said. We're using the state standard operating procedure. It's linked on this page. I encourage everyone to go and read it. It's quite a dense document. If the building is identified for deep cleaning, we're going to ask all staff to work remotely while it's deep cleaned. The facility director will notify the principal when the deep cleaning is done, and then the building will be reopened for staff at that point. We expect deep cleaning to last a day or two at the very most. Again, it's going to depend on the size of the building. A building like, sorry, I'm going to use Wayne. I hope we never have to do it. But, if we use Wayne, Wayne can easily be done in a day. A high school or a middle school may take a day or two to be able to realistically do everything that they need to do with that. It's also really important on here that there's a confidentiality reminder. Personal identifying information will only be disclosed to those who need to know. So, if you are a close contact, you will be told that by the nurse or your building principal. If you do not get the nurse or the building principal, it means that you are not considered a close contact by definition from the CDC. I understand that makes people nervous, I really do. But, we are following the guidelines. It is also incumbent upon all staff at the school level to not identify a student or staff member who may have tested positive. We simply cannot do it. The school district is open to liability, and frankly, if a teacher is doing that, that teacher has now opened themselves up to personal liability. It's really, really important that you understand that you're dealing with a medical record that follows HIPAA rules. And no, we're not a medical facility, but when we have that medical information, we are bound by that law. In addition to the FERPA laws that talk about what we can and can't share about student information. So, no, we're not trying to hide behind a shield of confidentiality. We're not. We understand, we're in a really tough time here right now. But, we are doing what we are expected and told to do. And nobody wants to hide anything from anybody. And it's blatantly false for anyone to get up here and say that. I'm sorry. This is how we do this. Any questions? Gary, I'll let you manage them.
Are the buses cleaned every day?
Yes. There, but there is a bus cleaning protocol every day, plus there is a deep clean protocol when there is a case on the bus. Thank you for asking that question.
Who determines the close contact list from the bus?
Yeah, so that's a rip, thank you. Dane has personal experience with this, so it's a great question. So, the bus guidance, I'm going to be very honest, changes. It changed in a week's time, from one to the other. It's the CDC that's telling us what to do with the bus contact. We just follow their guidance, and it has changed. I will tell Dane that it has changed. And I think part of it was a conversation that we had earlier, so. But, it is something that's constantly evolving. So, I do know in the space of a week, that bus protocols changed three times. Because I had a lot of conversation. So, that's a really great question. But, we use the guidance from the CDC for that purpose, so.
Something that's sort of listed, but to help it, me get it straight in my head, both on the heading of our chart here, is that a positive case that would initiate this may also be a probable case.
Only if it's probable based on the CDC telling us that. So, I will share with people that my first letter with the middle school case, that actually started as a probable positive case. And we were told Monday to start acting as if it was a probable positive. So, that's what we started to do. But, we won't, we can't make a determination, again, if Jeff Boston calls and says, "Well, I brought my son or daughter for a test, I'm waiting for the results. I have COVID, so more than likely, they have COVID too, because they're not feeling really great." Yeah, it's probably a probable case, but I can't act on that. I can act on it if the CDC calls and says, "Jeff Boston has a son or daughter that's just run a test, and I believe that that is a probable case. Start acting as if it's positive." Then, we kick into this. But, we're not going to do that on our own. We're going to get guidance from the CDC before we act on a probable positive case.
Now, on this chart, it says this may come from parent, healthcare provider, or CDC.
That's right.
But, part of it, you're saying, "The report may come from any of those, but our acting on it..."
Yes.
"...may not happen until it's confirmed by the CDC."
Exactly, yeah. That's why there has to be, once we know of a case, we call DOE, we call CDC, they call me. So, that way, we can start that conversation and figure out what we need to do from there.
So, whatever the source, we can start the process by notifying CDC.
Yes.
But, we cannot act as far as shutting the school or doing contact reporting or calculations
Right.
...until we've got the CDC affirming some sort of probability.
Absolutely.
Would it be inappropriate to start our calculations of contacts, etc., in private, prior to that notification, so that if the notification comes, we could move even faster?
Yes, so, if a parent calls, we're calling the CDC and doing all of those things, but we would be doing it very quietly, because if that comes back as negative, then there's no action to be taken. So, we have, my, like, we've talked about this, that it's administrative team at this point, and we know what steps we need to take. So, it's like, like the nursing team, as an example, has already said, I'm going to use the middle school. Angela gets a call. She's actually going to call the rest of the nurses in the district and say, code COVID, I don't know what else to call it. They're going to be on a Zoom meeting, and then they're going to start divvying up the work on what they need to do. I'm working with the nurse in that school, as well as calling the CDC. So, I'm in direct contact with the CDC as well. Then, I'm talking to the building principal. So, we're trying, we have this, like, I'll be honest, the second case at the high school was done like that. The second time was much smoother in terms of doing that, but it's because we moved and we already have cohorts set up. So, it's very easy to pull that cohort list or to pull a list from Power School for that student to know what classes they're in, so you can quickly identify what staff might have been affected, what advisor group they're in, you know, those kinds of things. So, it moves pretty quick now, especially the second time. And I unfortunately hate to say this, but I think it's going to happen again. But, I feel like we're getting better each time we do it as well, so.
I don't know if it's very relevant, but it seems some similarities on the question of how fast to make major reactions. Back in May, I was suspicious, and because of my work and because of my family, I decided I was going to go get a test for COVID. And because of my work, I was able to do that within a day, you know, just going through a small process. And I stayed awake from work. You know, I notified work that I was doing it, and I stayed away from work for a few days until the test came back negative. But, there was no notification of work by the email chain or whatever of my doing that until an anonymous notice at a later point that one staff had been tested, but had turned up negative. However, I am sure that if, by the time I needed to be back to work the day after the positive, the negative results came back, there would have been major action. And I suspect my supervisor was preparing to replace me if I was not able to be there. Go ahead, Betty.
About, from the time that you hear even a suspicion, if a parent, for example, if a parent called you and said, "My son or daughter had, is being tested for COVID because there is COVID in the family." About how much time does it take for the, for, I mean, you're contacting CDC right away. How long does it take them to get back to you?
Oh, minutes, yeah, minutes. I, on, sorry, last Friday, I talked to CDC, the person that I worked with, the contact tracer. He must have called me five times, and I must have called him five times. And it's like, pretty much instantaneous for the most part. I didn't wait very long to get an answer for any of the questions that I had. It moves pretty quick.
CDC is pretty much on top.
Well, that's...
I have personal experience.
Well, I have personal experience too. And I also know that if someone is suspected of having COVID, then their whole family is supposed to be quarantined.
And that's kind of the key. What Betty just said is really kind of the key. If I'm a parent and I test positive, my children are now close contacts. They shouldn't be going to school. End of discussion. They shouldn't be going to school. They are now close contacts. And yes, we have to trace back, when was the last time they were in school and all that stuff. But, really, the message that we need to say is, if you're, if you've got COVID, your children are now considered close contacts. Do not bring them to school. Do not send them to school. That creates a ripple effect of all these things people are talking about. And it creates a lot of anxiety, because then everyone's trying to make connections between who's got what where, and when was the last time I saw them, and all that kind of stuff. So, really, the really important message is, if you're sick, stay home. And that's really what we want parents to take that seriously.
Or if you're not sick, but someone else in your family is. Because, I mean, even while you're waiting for the test result, if you're suspected of having COVID, that person is isolated in the house. Everyone else is quarantined. And, and I speak from experience.
For sure.
It's changed a lot.
Yes.
And my wife got it in March. I had no symptoms whatsoever, nothing. Took care of her. Without me, she probably would have perished. And all I can say is, CDC back then was very lax, but they're right on top of things today. And they work darn fast. I had no, and the only thing that popped up on me was, a month ago, they tested my blood, and the guy says, "I don't understand why your blood's down, the red cells." He says, "That doesn't make sense. You're so able to do everything." "I cut seven cords of wood this year." He said, "But, I think you must have had it." So, I went, he said, "I want you to go and have an antibody test." I have the antibodies, and have no clue when I ever had it. So, I mean, that's just true. It's, but, you know, if one is sick, the others must be. But, they wouldn't test me at all. They refused to.
Not at that time, not in March.
No, not in March.
But, they would now.
Probably.
So, just for clarification, based on Mr. D's request, if you are hear that someone has been exposed, can you then call the CDC, or do you have to wait?
I will ask the nurse to make that initial call to the CDC. And usually, she will get the contact back, like, either, "Yes, it's positive, yes, they're taking a test." You know, she'll get that information as the healthcare person in our school. Then, she'll let me know, so that way I can then act from there.
So, you can call if you hear of exposure, but then can't follow this flowchart doodad until it's actually a test of positive?
Right, or a probable positive for the CDC.
And my other question is, this is created October 6. Was this created by us October 6, or them, or?
No, I pulled that out of the DOE, because people were asking...
The DOE SOPs?
Yeah. Thanks, Kim.
So, yeah, I read that. Oh, it was some fabulous coffee reading on Saturday morning. So, this, because I guess my question is, obviously, that is after we had already had an issue. What, did this not exist before that?
It wasn't clearly defined, and I wanted to put something out so people would know exactly what was going on from the school point of view. But, I wanted to bring this to you guys first, before I made it a kind of public document. So, after tonight's meeting, it's a public document. We'll either add it to our handbook and/or probably post it on our website as well.
And now, I got a medical question for you. So, the 14-day quarantine from last exposure. So, if a family member has it and has tested positive and is symptomatic and has the fever and blah, 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 for the rest of the family members, how long, like, is it 14 days from when they're no longer symptomatic? Or is it 14 days regardless? Doesn't matter?
So, it's 14 days regardless, but if they start to show symptoms, then that could be...
The extra family member?
Right.
But, so, they, if they're, so if the family member is, because I've, obviously, there are plenty of things saying that people have had symptoms for like a month. So, if a family member is still having symptoms for 14 days, the kid can still return to school on that 15th day?
If the child doesn't have...
As long as the child doesn't have symptoms.
Exactly, if the child...
And they have also tested positive, or that's only recommended?
That's only recommended, right, negative, yeah, if it tests negative.
So, they don't have to, so 14 days, I'm a parent, I'm old, and so I have symptoms, apparently unlike Gary. For 14 days, my kid, I don't want to have them tested. I'm still fever-ish, and I can still send my kid to school on that 15th day.
Right. I would assume you're probably having a conversation with your doctor, though, if you're still not feeling well. And your doctor may say, "Well, hold, you know, hold them out a little bit longer." That's very possible.
And on our little fill-out thing automated doodad, would after 14 days, as a parent, I can then say, "They haven't been exposed in the last 14 days"?
Right, technically, yes, which is, yeah. There's, sounds like there's a little bit of a hole there.
I would assume that they are being, that the person who has the symptoms and has tested positive is being isolated within the house.
That is a brave assumption. Some houses don't have space for that.
Oh, I know. Oh, I understand.
I mean, that's great in theory, but, I mean, there are a lot of houses out there that only have one bathroom, for example. So, no matter what, they're at least sharing that.
So, Jay, I just wanted some clarification on the timeline again. So, this says created October 6. So, you said you created this after the incidents, but this procedure was still in place? Just because this paper wasn't, so you followed the procedure that you were supposed to follow, even though this right here was not printed, right? Just want to make sure that was clear.
Yes, because it's all there in the SOP, but it's not like this. And this is a quick, easy way to kind of say... And this is a quick, easy way to kind of say, what are they doing and how are they doing it? That's what kind of the purpose of that was supposed to be.
This is helpful.
Yeah.
Just as a side note, if there's one bathroom, some facilities, families have used a porta potty in that person's room. They literally do not relieve the room that is their bedroom. Food is brought to them, the porta potty is removed.
Yeah, that's right.
That is impressive. I did have a question, but now I forgot.
Sorry.
The porta potty discussion made me totally forget my question.
You got Amy here.
The nurses are, they are speeding, they're putting in, I don't know if it's when, in the slow road, that nurse, the person who cares, they send them home. If they have a chart, they look at the number of symptoms and different things. They will tell, ask the character, pick up the child immediately and say the child cannot return to school, like, had a COVID test. I mean, it's not, it's worth having to sit and waiting for a positive. I mean, there are proactive things that are happening every day. This week, we had two kids, I believe, that were sent home just this week and have already gotten a negative test. I mean, we really think they were, but just because they fit in that criteria, they should be tested. So we have kids, they, and I don't know if it's middle school or high school, it probably is. You know, certain criteria for the kids, we send them home and they can't come back. So either somebody is supposed to lie or they get a negative test for something. So multiple layers of screening are happening.
I remember my question post porta potty. So we're towards the tail end of our 14 days. If we had another positive test by now, you would have informed us?
Yes.
Because I think that's pretty awesome that we only had two.
It is.
One in each, two different places. I think that's amazing.
Yes. I think that shows the hard work that our teachers, our custodians, our food staff, food service staff and our students, they want to be here, like Sean had said. So they're working really hard to make sure that there's no spread. So, I mean, kudos goes out to all of the middle school and high school and everyone that works there because without their help, we'd probably be looking at more cases. And I'd be sitting here saying, we've got this, this and this. And at this point, we don't knock on wood, but.
And that's a fair point because that means the masks must help too because we must have had a lot of clothes going to access something.
Do we know how many kids are responding, or how many parents are responding to the screen?
Yeah, we have, I actually don't know the exact number as of today, but we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 95% to 96% compliance with the app. Yeah, it's, it's been really, really good. We're very lucky. And I think it's because our community wants our schools to be open and they're willing to do what they need to do to make sure that schools stay open. So. I did have some other information for you guys. If it's okay, I'll move on. There's a, I wanted to give you guys some numbers, if it's okay. I don't want to rush that, but at the same time, I do have a few more things I wanted. So I wanted to give you guys an update on enrollment. October 1st is when we have to report enrollment. So I just wanted to give you guys kind of a snapshot of what it looks like because I know that is a cause for concern. So last year, school year 1920, our October 1st enrollment count was 1,139. This year, it's not official. We're still working on it. But I expect it's going to finish somewhere very close to this. Our October 1st count is 1,080 at this point. So we've, we are down 59 students at this point, based on these preliminary numbers. So we have, in that 1,080, we have, by my last count, and again, it may go up or down a couple of numbers, but we're somewhere close to almost 80 students who are either doing remote through the middle school, high school full-time or doing at-home supported learning at the K-5 level. So we're somewhere around the 80 mark. Those students are counted in our student count. Our homeschool numbers have risen kind of dramatically. We have a total of 82 homeschool this year. 57 of those are new homeschool requests. Yeah. So, I mean, when you look, we had 59, we were down 59. It almost exactly matches our homeschool count. So again, when we're looking in the future, I expect those 57s are probably going to come back to us once we're through COVID-19. The other two could have been movement out of the district or something like that, which we always have movement kind of in and out of the district. Positive news also for you guys. The, we looked at the private school count is at 76. That has gone up a little bit. It's not super high. It has gone up a little bit, but we usually have a number that's somewhere right around there. So it hasn't gone up dramatically. Our superintendent request this year, we have 18 that left us, but we still had 44 coming into our district, which again is fantastic. I think that speaks volumes that we're still getting that number of superintendent requests to come to Moranacook area schools. So I think that's, that's a very positive thing, you guys. So obviously, these are all moving target numbers, but I wanted to kind of give you some little updates so you had a general picture of where we stood with that.
Go ahead, Sean.
How does it work for students that come from different counties? Say, like, Franklin, I don't know where they come from, that magnitude. Say one kid in Franklin County, Franklin County, I don't know where it comes from.
Yeah. That's a very good question. I don't have the answer to. I'm going to look into that because that probably will happen at some point. So that is a great question.
Not that we would ask them to.
Yeah.
Otso County, I think.
Yes. Yeah, something like that.
I think it was the last meeting you had mentioned, if we were still green after four or five weeks, we'd start talking about. I, I know that we just had a couple of COVID cases, but they seem to have been handled pretty well. And I didn't know if maybe, I don't know, some added, at least extending a full, I don't know, something. What's going on there?
So right now, I'm kind of at the point, I'll be very honest with you guys. It was a super stressful week last week. So I haven't even gone there. Yeah, I haven't even gone there yet. I know the governor released a new executive order about 100, about opening things up to 50% or 100 in one space. So I'm going to have an administrative meeting with the administrators next Tuesday afternoon. And we're going to talk about what that means for cafeterias and transportation and some of the other special kind of things that are affected by this. So I'm going to come back to you guys with something after I have a chance to talk with them about how it's working and where we are right now.
So next board meeting, you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking right now is I'll be able to come back and give you kind of a recommendation on where we should go. Good question. Thank you.
So Jay, I just have a quick question.
Yep.
So when the high school was in remote, fully remote these past few days, what happened to the CATC kids? Did they have, could they go to Coney or did they have to stay out also?
No, they had to, they actually had to because we were remote. That's the agreement we had with CATC. But Dr. Conway, correct me if I'm wrong, they could still connect with their CATC instructors, right?
I have the CATC instructor. I was told we were going to reach out to them. And like Mr. Schrempf said, the deal with CATC with every setting in the school is that they won't accept students from that school.
Yep, yep. Kind of the same thing we did with athletic and sporting events. If we go into a, a, a remote learning, then all activities get canceled for the period of remote learning. So it's kind of the same philosophy. So, yeah. No, good questions. iPads, just so I know, I think it was Abby that mentioned that just wanted to give you an update. They did not arrive on time, but they are scheduled to be here tomorrow, October 9th. And Diane and her tech team and a few extra support people will be working actually in this room on Friday to get those ready. And we will be looking at distributing the following week, starting somewhere around the 13th. We'll reach out to families and start getting them what they need. So that way, the iPads get into the hands of the K through 4 students. And I know I've got a couple on my road that keep asking me when it's coming. So. Then, let's see, I already covered the COVID screener. That's going very, very well. We did elect to continue that during the shutdown because we want people to stay in the habit of doing it daily. So we did continue with that. And I wanted to give you, we do not know. I know we're still in the midst of fall sports. There has been no word on winter sports, but I have a feeling that that will be addressed very, very soon. And I know DOE and DHHS are working with the NPA around winter sports. So we have absolutely, it's kind of radio silence as far as winter sports go. So we'll get through our, our fall sports. And as soon as we have something, I will absolutely bring it to you. And then my final thing, I wanted to give you guys information on because you probably heard about it. We did have Corona relief fund, number one, that came through to us. I will be sharing with the facilities committee next week. We'll be walking through all of that. That was approximately $900,000. And then just recently, we were noticed, notified that there would be a CRF round two and it's about $942,000. And again, I'll be working with the facilities committee on that and bringing back a report to you guys probably at our next board meeting with that. But that's another $942,000. And all of this money has to be spent by December 30th. So it's, it's, and it's all got to be directly related to COVID relief in schools is what it's framed as. So I'm going to work with the facilities committee on both of, kind of both of them. And then I'll give you guys a full report at the next board meeting around that. So you kind of know where we're falling with everything. And again, I'll just let you guys know, it's again, a moving target. They change the rules on us. We say we'd like this. They say, yes, you can have it. And then a week later, we get an email and they say, oh, sorry, we're wrong. You can't have that. And we have to go back to the drawing board again. So it's been very stressful. But the important thing is trying to get people what they need. The desks were purchased with that so that we had desks facing forward in the same direction by DOE mandates. We bought Plexiglas personal protective equipment. We have kind of a steady stream of that coming in, et cetera, et cetera. But we'll give you a full update on that. But I did want to let you know, we'll go to facilities with it and then bring it to the full board right after that. So. So those were all of my updates. I apologize for taking any more, any longer than I needed to there. Hopefully that helps.
When you look at the financial statements on page 10 to 23, that's why the facilities is down at below 50%. Because it's going to be adjusted. Hey, I watched this thing. You do need to give Sean some time till he gets that bit out.
Yes. Yes. We'll be talking about that too at, at the facilities committee because we do have to wrap that up as well. You're right.
All right. Last item.
I move to go into executive session to consider labor contract discussions between the RSU 38 Board of Directors and the Moranacook Area School Staff Association pursuant to the 1 MRSA 4056D.
Second.
Okay, quick roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Oh, did we lose her?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean? Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And unanimous. So we'll wait for the room to clear out. Yep. Yep. So for the remote viewers at home, we are going to put you into a waiting room. And as soon as the executive session is done, then we will bring you back. And Diane McGregor is the one that's hosting that. So you'll see her working with you on that respect. Yep. Okay, we're back in session.
Motion, did you? Second.
I second.
Thank you guys very much.